Oh, I guess I better call the meeting to order. Called order of the meeting on Monday, May the 8th. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald, here. Councilmember Ashford?
Present.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Here.
Councilmember Warden?
Here.
Mayor Rep?
Here. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of April 24th and the special meeting of May the 1st. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ashford. Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Archibald. Is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We do have two presentations tonight. If the clerk would please read the first one.
Number one is proclamation observing the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2017, as Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And this will be presented to Port Huron Police Department Captain Jeff Baker.
Would you like to meet me up there, Captain Baker? Read this, and then you can say a few words.
Sure.
Whereas the Congress and President John F. Kennedy signed Public Law 87-726 in 1962, Designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week beginning on Sunday, in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the law was amended by the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994, Public Law 103-322, Signed by President William Jefferson Clinton, Directing that the flag of the United States be displayed at half-staff on all government buildings on May 15th each year. And whereas the members of the Port Huron Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Port Huron by unceasingly providing a vital public service. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the Port Huron Police Department will honor Detective Sergeant Roy Chambly, who was killed in the line of duty on October the 10th, 1930, and all officers who have sacrificed their lives in the line of duty by wearing black mourning bands for a 48-hour period, beginning Monday, May 15th. Now therefore, I, Mayor Pauline M. Rep., Call upon citizens of the city of Port Huron and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2017, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all our citizens may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And I further call upon the citizens of the city of Port Huron to observe Monday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Mayor and council, thank you for this proclamation. It's an honor for me to receive this. To date, there's been 44 law enforcement officers that died in the line of duty. 2016, 141. 2015, 145. And countless others before that. I'd like to invite all of you on Wednesday at 9:00 in the morning. The public is welcome to attend also on behalf of Customs Border Protection at the Flag Plaza. There's going to be a short memorial service in honor of upcoming Police Week next week. I'd also like to extend an invitation to all of you next Tuesday. It's May 16th, at 6:00 PM. Right in these chambers, we'll have our award ceremony, which is an opportunity for us to recognize law enforcement officers across the county, across state lines, also internationally. With our help we get from Sarnia, recognize heroic acts done not only by law enforcement officers, but citizens of our area. One last thing I'd like to say is, if you ever go on Officer's Dow Memorial Page, the founder, Chris Cogriff, and I hope I didn't ambush his name, he said a statement on there. He says when an officer is killed in the line of duty, that department doesn't lose an officer. The nation loses an officer. And I truly believe that. Those 44 that lost their lives this year and the countless others before that, it certainly is an honor to receive this proclamation on behalf of them and every other law enforcement officer. Thank you.
Proclamation number two is recognizing Saturday, May 13th, as Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day. And this will be presented to Chelly Cross, NALC Branch 529.
Hello. I'm going to read this, and then you're both welcome to say a few words. Whereas hunger affects millions of people nationwide, including millions of children, seniors, and military veterans. And whereas food pantry shelves filled from winter holiday giving are often bare in late spring. And whereas when school meal programs end in the summertime, millions of children must find alternate sources of food. And whereas in 2016, the National Association of Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive collected 80.1 million pounds of donated food, which were distributed locally in 10,000 cities and towns across America. And whereas in Port Huron in 2016, 46,000 pounds of donated food was collected by letter carriers and 1.6 million pounds in the state of Michigan. And whereas in 2017, hundreds of households in our country will struggle to provide enough food for their families. And whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers continued to work to end the challenges of hunger in the state of Michigan through its 25th Annual Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. And whereas on May 13th, 2017, the second Saturday of May, letter carriers will collect food donations to be distributed to pantries and food banks at a much-needed time of year. Now therefore, I, Pauline M. Rep., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Port Huron, and on behalf of councilmembers Archibald, Ashford, Harris, Lamb, Ruiz, and Warden, do hereby proclaim the second Saturday in May, Letter Carriers Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day in Port Huron. And I urge people all over our city to join me in this special observance.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Here is that.
Thank you.
So as she mentioned, this week, Saturday, May 13th, marks our 25th year of the food drive that we put on. It's just such a great opportunity to help those in need. And I just wanted to thank the city for the proclamation and for recognizing this day for us. And I just urge everyone to participate if they can. It's really easy. You just leave your food donation at your mailbox, and a volunteer or your letter carrier or a volunteer will come around and pick it up that day. All the food remains local, so everything we collect here is going to benefit the people in our area.
Did you want to state what type of food? So people know what they should put in?
Basically, we're asking for non-perishable donations, but we literally will take everything we can get. With a chance of rain, I just like to remind people that the softer bags of oatmeal, things like that, might get wet and ruined. So canned foods, protein foods, jars, peanut butter, things of that nature.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to public hearings, number one.
Is to hear comments on the proposed capital improvement program for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number one relative to the capital improvement program?
Mayor Rep. Just as a resident, I just wanted to make a public comment on this.
Well, normally, council would make their comments at other times during the public hearing.
Pardon me?
You want this to be a record of the public hearing?
Well, this is part of it for--
Because we're having our budget workshop tomorrow, where the council is going to be discussing the--
This issue?
The budget and capital improvement program at that time.
So I'll just turn this in and make it tomorrow?
Well, normally, that's what you would do is during the time of the, when the council's discussing it themselves. This is the opportunity for the public to come forward--
Yeah, just as a--
--and give their opinions. Yep. Okay?
Yep, I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing no one in the audience coming forth, I will declare public hearing number one closed. And number two, please.
To hear comments on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on public hearing number two relative to the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18? Seeing no one. Public hearing number two closed. Public hearing number three.
Is to hear comments on the proposed budget for the Port Huron Downtown Development Authority for fiscal year 2017-18.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on the proposed budget for the Port Huron Downtown Development Authority? Seeing no one, I'll declare public hearing number three closed. That is all of our public hearings. Now is the time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on any other items before us or anything that we have jurisdiction over, please come forward and give us your name. And you have four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rep., council members. My name is Bill Johnson. I live in Military Street in Port Huron. I am the vice president of the Port Huron Area Landlord Association. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Port Huron Area Landlord Association. We have concerns over the proposed rental inspection program fee increase. You all should have received a packet of information that we had sent out today. And I'm sure that you've heard in the past that we had a meeting on this. It wasn't much of a meeting. We were called to a meeting on Friday, March 24th, with James and David. We had no idea what the topic was. We were prepared to talk about the positive things that are going on in Port Huron. Once we were settled in, the bomb was dropped on us that the fees are going up. There was much discussion on the topic. Dollar amounts were thrown back and forth. And there were concerns from both sides that we heard back and forth. They wanted our support for the Monday meeting. And I'm not much of a spontaneous thinker or spontaneous negotiator. I'm more analytical, and I need time to think things through. At the moment, trying to get the best deal we could, I told them I would support them if they kept the fees reasonable, about $50 to $60 per year. So in good faith, I spoke at the March 27th council meeting and gave support to the reasonable increase of $50 to $60. And my push is more toward the $50 line. That was the last conversation that we had had with David and James. Now you're in budget sessions, and we have no concrete number to work with. We'd like to know where we're going with that. That's our concern. I know government moves slow, and I don't understand why this issue is being pushed so fast. What I'm asking you is, please, slow down. Give us the opportunity to come to the table and work out a solution that works well for both parties. Thank you for listening. Thank you for reading our packet today. Have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening?
Hi, Mike Bodice, President of Port Huron Landlord Association, Mayor Rep., Councilman James, City Manager. I didn't really have anything prepared other than after Bill did all the research on what he did and looked at all the numbers since we've had rental inspections since 1995. The city of Port Huron has literally brought in millions of dollars, right? I don't know what it was, $3, $4, $5 million. And I guess the question I have is, other than a few government jobs, how many jobs has rental inspection created? I know we have a percentage of houses out there that are the same percentage as they were in 1995. Maybe we've helped out about 5%. I could take any one of you in my vehicle Saturday morning at 8:00 in the morning, and by 5:00 at night, we'll have all the addresses down of every house in this city that needs to have attention. Okay, we don't need three rental inspectors. We don't need four, three blight inspectors. We don't need-- I guess I don't understand. Forty-three years in the business, and it's the same houses. It's the same units. The landlords have just switched over. We have a lot of homeowners. I bought several homes in the past that have lamp cords running to the electrical panels. They have radiator hoses, okay, used as traps and as drainage. These are homeowner houses. Of course, they don't get inspected. There's more fire trap, I believe, homeowner houses than our rental houses. I want my houses to be safe, number one, for the people, and number two, for lawsuits, okay? Homeowners, I mean, you know, it doesn't matter, okay? I guarantee you, if you guys went and inspected homeowners right now, there's more problems with homeowners in this town than there is with rentals, okay? Part of it's because of rental inspection, but part of it is because of the responsibility of the landlords, okay? I always use the 10% rule. 10% of my tenants are not quality tenants. You know, they're paying late, they're doing this. 10% of landlords are the same way. You guys know who they are. David, you know who they are. You know every single one of them. But yet, we're going to increase the budget from 200 and some thousand to 400 and some thousand. We're going to add three more rental inspectors. To me, it's a joke. It really is. We got rental inspection because at the time, the city manager and the planning director and the city attorney, they had the votes, because everybody else was doing it. Now we have rental inspection. I don't know. Show me what it's done. Show me the jobs it's brought. Show me the terrorism dollars it's brought. Just, you know, everybody's good with the facts and figures. Everybody can work numbers, right? I can work numbers too. But, you know, just make the people responsible. Everybody knows who the bad landlords are and bad homeowners are. Go after them, okay? Instead of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, okay? That's all I can say. Thanks, please.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? Seeing no one. Declare a public comment closed, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lamb?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Harris?
Could we take city manager number three off of consent and resolution number six, please?
Well, we might as well not have a consent agenda because only leaves one item, so we might as well do it at the other, at the time it's up. Would you, everybody agree with that? There's only one item left, so we might as well just take it in order at this point. So we'll move on. From the city manager, number one.
Is accepting the quote from Power Tech Services Incorporated in the amount of $36,645 for the replacement of four protective relays at the water filtration plant.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris? Is there discussion?
Mayor, can we get some background on this?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, and council before you, you have the four switches. As you recall, last year, we replaced about three or four at the wastewater plant. This is the four that will be going to the water plant.
Oh, okay.
And we had budgeted $40,000 in the budget, so this did come under budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
About the switch. How long do they last?
We'll ask Lenny about that one.
Madam Mayor, councilmember Ruiz, these switches have lasted about 20 years. And that's about what we would expect.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to item two under the city manager.
Accepting the bid from Hammar's Contracting in the amount of $9,500 for removal and disposal of excavated material at 1808 Bancroft Street.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This agenda item is for three bins that we have our spoils. I believe there's going to put a photo up of what those bins are located. About 1,500 yards. Last year, we paid about $11 a yard for disposal. This year, it's about $6 a yard with the low bid. And it is for these three bins. This is an aerial photo from last year, but it gives you an idea of where the bins are. So when they dig a water main or they dig a sewer main, they backfill with sand for the compaction. And these are the spoils. This is the current site. These three bins each have about 500 yards each in them, so for total of 1,500 yards.
There's a storage.
Yep.
Yes.
Still about $4 under a yard from last year. So good price.
Good. Any other, any questions? Councilmember Harris?
Just a comment. I really appreciate us getting a second bid this year because traditionally, it's pretty much been a lock on one bid. And this is great to see the reduction, so thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item three.
Is receiving and file the quarterly financial report for the nine-month period ending March 31st, 2017.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Mayor Protem Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Archibald. Perhaps we could have a--
Madam Mayor, just a quick update on your budget. You have a overview from Ed Brennan, but our budget is on par. We are under where we should be this time of year. For those items that are not is because those are for costs that we incurred the front part of the year. So whether it be a one-time billing or parks and recreation is heavier in June, or July, August, and September. But overall, the budget is on par. It looks like we're going to make our budget this year.
Is there questions?
Yeah, Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris?
I guess my only question here was the exclusion of, on the revenue side, of McMoran's revenues of $820,582.
What page are you referencing? Where are you? Or is this a question?
Yeah, it's--
Okay.
Where is it that you're talking about on the?
On this report, on the revenue side, it doesn't report the revenue for McMoran.
I think we just accounted for our expenses at McMoran.
Exhibit C?
What page? There we go.
One, two, three.
They separated it out, Ken.
I see it.
Okay, McMoran Complex is packet number 16 at the bottom, guys. It is the first paragraph or whatever, first column. McMoran Complex.
Okay, I'll see if I can find it. Because like I say, I just, and I was going to probably have the same question around.
Oh, okay.
I couldn't figure out why it didn't appear on the revenue side because the nine-month report that McMoran just did at their last meeting showed that McMoran had revenues of $820,582. And that would kind of change the budget situation in a plus for us.
Correct. They also incur most of their revenue in January and February when their ICE bills come due. And then they also have significant costs in April, May, and June, and July that rides them out. So their revenue is disproportionate. It doesn't come at equal times during the year. So they may be high in revenue at one point in the year, but that doesn't count for the low revenue they'll get for the next three months to ride it out. So it really has to look at the whole year to really gauge the fiscal health of McMoran.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. I'm there, Protem Ashford.
While you're on this, Mr. Brennan, in the second paragraph of the cover letter, I mentioned the general fund revenue for the current nine months have increased about 2.6% when compared to last year. Is this a trend that we could look forward to? Or is that just one-up occurrence?
Mayor and council, the main reason for that, as you'll recall, when we got our personal property tax replacement revenue, we received about $818,000, and we had budgeted about $440,000. So, and just to go back to the McMoran question, on my packet, it shows on the bottom of page 17, it's the second column over here, is McMoran.
Second, oh, okay.
And you'll see charges for services, $820,581. So--
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor and council, the personal property tax payment as well, we do have concerns. There was an overpayment last year, which is why we received so much more. And the state has not fully been transparent in how they tend to rectify that. Will they essentially write that overpayment off? Will they decide not to bill us back, essentially cut us a bill for this year? This is just within, this is every municipality in the state, so it's not just us. The other question is, is are they going to deduct that from next year? So although we were overpaid this year, we may find an underpayment next year to account for that overpayment. Treasury has yet to decide, or at least inform us.
Any other questions, discussion?
Mayor, just a follow-up question to that, then. Are we setting aside the overpayment in anticipation that they may deduct it off of next year? And so that we won't have a shortfall?
Anything left over will go to the general fund this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Thank you, Ed. Take a vote on receiving and filing the financial report.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. I will go to resolutions, number one, please.
Is authorizing five payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lamb? Is there any questions, discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Resolution number two.
Is approving the sale of the vacant lot at seventeen fourteen J Street for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Archibald? Is there any discussion?
Just advise that this is the adjoining property owner. This is some of this property they've been looking at for a while, and they came to the city and offered to buy it off us. We felt it was a fair price, and we no longer have to mow it. So this goes into the getting these, I know it's a goal of the council to get more of these off the, off the city roll and back on the private tax roll. So there you go. Another one off the roll.
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Archibald?
Do we know the intent of what they plan to do with this property?
I believe it's just additional yard space.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Warden?
This is what, fifty, forty-nine and a half frontage? Wide the lot there by a hundred? And is this, do we have, was it for sale, for sale sign out there? Was it just the city was approached by? And did we, is this a, how do we, is this a value for vacant land of that size?
This is actually pretty good value for typically the council members. We've sold properties between twenty-five hundred down to five hundred dollars depending on the size, where they're at, where they're located, are they buildable. So this is a, a very good price point. As your list for, how do we list these properties, if you go on the city port here on website, there is actually a list of all the properties the city owns, which ones are for sale, which ones available. And we're trying to unload them as best we can.
Buildable either, is it?
I don't think this is buildable at forty-nine feet, is it? Could be buildable.
Buildable.
So just looking at the surrounding property owners, if we're trying to unload some of these, have we communicated prior something like, hey, by the way, this is a for sale for the city?
Yep. We mail out to all the adjoining property owners. We actively engage the neighbors, especially when we're doing a blight elimination. If we're tearing down a house, we start having those conversations with the neighbors. It is our intention not to hold property for very long.
And was there a price on it when you sent it out?
No.
Just kind of the top bid?
We essentially have it discussed with each neighbor which, what they're willing to pay. Some properties are worth five hundred, some, some we do payment plans with the Port Huron Housing Corporation if they own some of the property. So it depends parcel to parcel.
Yeah, well, my comment, it just, you know, is we're got some, this looks like a buildable, potentially buildable lot, and there's some surrounding neighbors in it. I don't know the condition of it, but, you know, try to get top dollar for something that might be buildable. Maybe the marketing side might be able to get, potentially get some higher, higher revenue in, higher sales prices.
We'll let our marketing person know in community development.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor Rep, on those lots, as we speak about them and getting top dollar and such, I think I said as a councilperson, I'd be tempted if they paid me a dollar and they said they were going to build on something, we'll take a new structure and a new house.
Absolutely. In fact, we're seeing that. I think we have three properties now that we have houses going up on that were from blight elimination, three new homes that they're selling for what, in the one forties and one thirties? I believe it's Steve Smith is building a couple homes. So it is, it is amazing, some of these homes. But also is the, the, we hold these properties for a long time. We're paying to mow them every time. We, you know, we don't recoup that. And plus, they're getting back on the tax rolls, and it makes nice yard for people.
I think that's the plus for the city, they're back on the tax roll.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Councilmember Harris?
He, he brings up a good issue, you know. There's, there's some people that live over on sixteen hundred block of Miller Street, and, and they're kind of tied into making any kind of a decision because we have some property that eventually probably be for sale, but the county also has the other adjacent property. And it's making a lot more difficult to negotiate with, with the county than it is with the city. So we're going the right direction. The county, I'm not so sure, so.
Agreed there.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to item three under resolutions.
Is authorizing participation in the Michigan State Housing Development Authority's blight elimination program and appointing the planning director as the project coordinator and authorized representative for the program if awarded.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lamb, I wonder if we could have a explanation of that program?
Yep, we, this is a continuation of our blight elimination dollars. We're applying for additional funding. As you well know, we were already awarded a million dollars. This will be for additional funding. This is technically housekeeping. We have to point, designate a point person for that grant application. And David will be as the director planning the point person for that program. So this is just housekeeping as part of the application process. We're applying for how much more money, David? Yeah.
Good evening. This is a grant application for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for blight elimination and demolition of properties that are nuisance in the neighborhoods.
Excellent. One thing I will say is one with our blight elimination, as you've heard, you probably can read across the state, that other communities have had issues with the audits of their blight elimination dollars. We have not. We have got a clean bill of health on the way we execute our program. In fact, other cities have called us and want to know how are we doing the blight elimination programs. We do it so well and so cost effectively. So this program's been working very well for the city.
Thank you. Mayor Rep? Yes, I'm Mayor Pro Tem Ashford.
Yeah, and I think it's important that you are at the table to do this and represent in us, so.
Well, it's another great opportunity to bring more funding.
To bring more funding here, yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Rep.
Yes. Anyone else?
Mayor, Mayor Rep, David, is there any, any matching things? Is there anything we have to do? If we get awarded whatever dollar amount, we just get to basically facilitate the program?
As with anything, the devil's in the details. In this particular case, we do have some acquisition dollars that we would need to come to the table. Whether we use other CDBG funds or other programs, look at the acquisition, these dollars are strictly for the demolition. So there is a component. It also, they look to have the support of, of the governing body. That's why you have this before you tonight.
Any other questions, discussion? Thank you. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item four.
Is authorizing participation in the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's redevelopment-ready community program and appointing the planning director as the project coordinator and authorized representative for the program.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Archibald?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a little background on this. The, the MADC has essentially created what's called a redevelopment-ready program. And what that is, is they want to go through each community and make sure that your ordinances are updated, your processes are updated, so that it's pretty streamlined. If somebody wants to come in and build a factory or create jobs, that they're not going to get bogged down in red tape or unnecessary legislation or outdated legislation. This program is something that they are pushing communities to do. Essentially, in the near future, if you are not through the redevelopment-ready communities project, you will be ineligible for grant funding or incentives through MADC to lure companies in. So this is pretty much a hoop. They're making every community in the state jump through in the next couple of years to be able to continue to qualify for MADC incentive packages. And so this is, everyone's going through the training, it's in Flint. And so I've been reading about this at every conference I go to for many years, but now they're kind of getting strong-armed into pushing everyone into doing it. So this is a hoop to jump through to continue getting MADC support.
Any questions? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item five.
Is approving the scheduling of a public hearing for May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen to hear comments on the amended application for an obsolete property rehabilitation act certificate for six oh nine Huron Avenue.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lamb? Any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item six.
Is confirming the mayor's appointment of Bruce Seymour the second and the reappointments of Michael Rosso and Lynn Secory to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority with terms to expire April fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lamb? Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Harris?
You know, in all due respect for Mr. Seymour's application and stuff, I guess the question that I had, I, Mr. Clegg, our former engineer here, has expressed his position to be on some of the boards around the city and stuff. And, and I just wondered if, you know, if this is something Mr. Clegg would have been interested in, or are we considering him for something else down the line?
I know he's put his application in, but in this particular case, and a lot of times on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Bruce Seymour works at the EDA, so his connection there is really close. And that would be the reason for putting him in that position at this time. And I'm sure that Mr. Clegg will come up for something else. We'd love to utilize his services.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's a deficit at all. I just think that we just can't let Mr. Clegg slip by the-
No, we can't.
Cracks.
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
And to answer your question, Mr. Clegg is, he's on the zoning board of appeal. He's on the ZBDA board, and we're glad to have him. He's a great resource.
Good.
Yeah, we're glad to have him on board and use that knowledge.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, David, for bringing that up.
Mayor Rep, and with that, just to piggyback off of Councilmember Harris, I know during the goal session, I somewhat took the lead on saying that we could get more candidates. And we do have about, we have one sitting out here tonight that's always at our council meetings. We've got to pick up her app, get her application all straight. And then we have about seven more that I plan to hand in, in June. You know, we're trying to prep them. So that is moving fast. So we'll have more of a diversity. And it's not just people of color. There are other people that I found out there that also want to be there. So took the years also. So be ready to hand it in.
Sounds good.
Yep.
If there's no other discussion, we will-
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Warden?
I just want to, just make a couple of comments about, again, the reappointments and extending for Michael Rosso and Lynn Secory. Again, they're out, they've been involved in quite a few other committees and things, and they've done an outstanding job. So I do appreciate them for their extending of their term.
Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warden?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our agenda. We do have several announcements. A special meeting
will be held tomorrow night for the council to discuss the budget, and it'll be held at five o'clock in conference room four oh eight. Also, as mentioned before, the Department of Public Safety Awards Ceremony is held next Tuesday, May sixteenth, at six o'clock here in this room. And then I want to see if I get this right, nine AM on Monday, the fifteenth, at the Flag Plaza, you're having a ceremony.
That ceremony is on Wednesday.
Wednesday, this Wednesday.
Oh, this Wednesday.
This Wednesday. So the tenth, May the tenth.
At nine?
Nine o'clock in the morning. Okay.
Glad you caught that. Okay.
Yeah, because I thought it was the same day as the, okay. May tenth, nine AM, Flag Plaza. Also, volunteers are needed to assist with planting flowers during the Beautification Commission's annual plant day, which will be Saturday, May the twentieth. And if you're interested, contact the clerk's office at nine eight four nine seven two five and press extension zero for more details. That concludes the announcements. Is there anything else to come before council?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Harris?
I guess just one little one here. It's kind of early in the season, but there's supposed to be a national junior college women's fast pitch tournament this, this following week on the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth with Pine Grove Park.
Oh, very nice.
So hopefully, we had our bad weather last week, and we'll, we welcome these teams in from out of town and out of state for a good weekend, so.
Very good.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Ashford?
Yeah, I just got two things here. Back in twenty sixteen, I think it was in October, I think, James, we tried to deal with that VIDOC issue, the south end, where the VIDOC on Twenty-Fourth Street. And we did hear from them this past week, and they will be starting to fill in that crumbling of the VIDOC under there, starting at the end of June or mid-July. So we've already agreed on the, the blight that was there. Most of that has, have been moved, but they still have to, you know, get someone to maintain it. And I think they have did that. So we'd just like to, on behalf of all the council members, because we, I know Harris, he was there with me. So to thank everyone and the mayor, you know, for helping to support this, this venture. So we will be seeing some improvements out at that end of town in regards to the VIDOC. And the, as for the sidewalk, that's to be determined. We're still working on that. And also, this weekend, I had the, the opportunity to, to help our mayor out at two events. And the, the one event was the Lutherans Convention that was held here. And when I got there and I spoke on her behalf, I had so many people coming to me telling me what a wonderful city we had. I mean, they were just, they were just overjoyed. And the hospitality of the Doubletree, it was just, I mean, even though the rain, it was ugly outside, they just said they couldn't believe what a gem that we had. That's quote-unquote, what a gem we had up here in the city of Port Huron. And then the next event that was held was an event by, who was that? Help me pulling, yeah, the flat, the mortgage burning.
Yes.
We had people here from Mississippi, Alabama, the Detroit area, all down throughout the south. They were up there at Rick's, where the old fall cutter. And the same, same remarks were made. They couldn't believe it, that we had this. I mean, they were looking out there and saying, my goodness, what is going on up here? I thought, well, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So I, I'm saying that to say this, that, you know, we need to try to, you know, appreciate more, better what we have. You know, they do it. And certainly, I'm not ever ashamed of where I live at or anything. We, we just need, need to be better ambassadors of our city, you know, in terms of appreciating, appreciating what we have here. So just wanted to share that.
And that is true, because every time I've had to give a welcome, it's amazing how many people have not been here before, or even if they've been here years ago, are so impressed with the area. And it's so nice to hear.
Yeah, and they were so genuine. And one lady chased me down at the door. She said, wait a minute, wait a minute, I want to tell you. You know, I thought, oh, wow, here's another one. So, you know, it is, it's really pleasing to hear-
It is.
Those positive comments, yeah.
Is there anything else?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Warden?
Yep. Just wanted to let everybody know and thank what a great event we had this past week with the prayer, National Prayer Day, prayer breakfast over at the memorial room in McMoran. Outstanding way to not start the day, start the week, and start the year. Very good group and very good message. I would like to thank any of the citizens that came up and did give some comments today. And anytime they come up, to keep encouraging them to come and, whether it's on the agenda or not, share what you can. And putting that little package together and some of the other letters that have started to come in, we appreciate it. And then, actually, I wanted to know if, for McMoran, is there, is there some shows coming up this week over at McMoran, or anything coming up that you can kind of, it's hard for me to keep up with it, it's going so fast, which is good. But I think we just had a, a country concert or some nice concert there this past week. And what I'd like to do is figure out a way to, to be more up to speed on, as fast as you guys are putting those in there on there, to be able to check and keep, keep my calendar open. But is there a few things coming up this weekend or this week?
Do you want to come to the podium, Nancy? I hate to-
All right.
That everybody can hear.
Yeah, I just, I just like to share this, the stuff that she's doing. And there's so much activity going on there now that it's, it's amazing.[1589.32]